The budget work session and the first thing is district building administration pages five.
I am ready. These are our last four sections of the book or of the this.
Did we give him permission?
If you didn't see it, Laura is asking for the page numbers again.
So we're starting at page five dash eight four. And this is function two, three, one, one Board of Education Services. This is, uh, this is the function uh where we paid for the uh membership with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And the National uh Boards of Education um as well as the cost of any board members attending the uh the conferences. So if we go down to page five dash eight five. Here are the expenses. There is uh it's the same amount as last year. Uh we have forty-two hundred in there for travel, which is really the the cost of the of the convention. Or any and any uh travel that would be associated. Uh five hundred dollars for food supplies and uh the twenty-five by forty-one under dues is the cost for the cave. And NS NSBA memberships.
Andrea, I have I have a couple of questions. I'll I'll lower my hand.
I'm gonna go with you and then Liz, I'm sorry.
Okay, when it says travel for administration, four thousand two hundred dollars. Are they talking about Board of Ed or administration in the schools?
No, that that's the cost for the Board of Ed to uh attend either the cave conferences or or any costs to uh to attend any sort of conference. Those Board of Ed members.
So could we clarify that?
Yeah, I will cha- I will change that.
And um. I noticed last year was estimated it was less naturally um. I don't believe that and I think I can't, I don't know why. Nobody is going to the National School Board Conference. It's a wonderful conference. It's in Orlando this year. I think around April fourth. Um I you know, we always had that in the budget for travel for school board members, two school board members. And our superintendent would also travel there. It's it's a one wonderful, wonderful conference. If for those people that have attend. Cave, this is like Cave on steroids. There are just so many wonderful presenters. And um I I would highly recommend, you know, at least two people from our board being able to travel there. And I would like to be able to break out the the difference between. The cave, the cost to belong to cave and the cost that for the NSBA, which is the National School Board Conference. Do you have that, Ken? Separated?
I I don't have that here in front of me. I I do have that.
I I remember it was usually around five thousand to belong to the National School Board Association. And cave was over twenty thousand. And at one point, we were thinking of cutting that. Um and then contracting with cave for individual services. Because it because they've gone up so much over the years in price. So I would like to see that separated. To see how much it really costs for National School Board and how much it costs for Connecticut Boards that, you know, the cave association. But but there should be something for board travel and it should definitely not say administration. And and you know, this would be the cost. Um I mean, I've even done it where I've paid for my own travel. But then the um. Gotten has paid to attend the conference. So there are ways that board members could go. You know, where it wouldn't be as much of a cost of the di- district, but professional development is extremely important. And I believe board members should, you know, have the opportunity to attend the National School Board meetings. Thank you.
Rita, you stole my thunder. I was gonna ask if we could break out cave versus NSBA. Because I think it's important. The other thing is is um. I do know of some other boards of education that are considering um not having association with cave. And and doing things with, you know, like contracting out for services. And maybe this is a time we start thinking about that. I'm not sure really if that's the ru- the one, the way we should go. But I think it's something's worth discussing. So um I just wanna, I just wanted to piggyback on that.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I know Beverly, um I know she's attended, I've attended conferences, National School Board with Beverly. So Beverly, feel free to join in anytime.
Thank you. Uh first of all, thank you, Rita. I had no idea that that was a possibility, that there was history of that. So thank you for that, Rita. With regard to cave. I don't know enough to have an opinion of what we should do, but I think we shouldn't be precipitous to do it immediately. I think there should be some additional research on. What services we need, what services we don't need and what the costs would be before we make any decision. Thank you.
Rita, I I don't I don't have a raised hand on my computer. But um you're you're absolutely right. Years ago, when I first got on the board in nineteen ninety-three. No board members ever went to um the NSBA. And then George Riley, the superintendent at the time. He started encouraging board members to go to NSBA. And so I went and then I would come back and give a presentation. And then other board members started going. Rita went with me and Brian Chavel went. But it it is excellent conference. You get well-known keynote speakers. I can't even think of all. We had Sandra Day O'Connor, Madeleine Albright, Bill Clinton. I mean, it is a phenomenal conference. But I have to say, and I think Rita might remember this, the last time I wanted to go before I got off the board. The board voted no for me to go. And that was very discouraging. Uh and because years before that, because I was vice president of cave, cave used to pay for me to go. And then when I stepped down from cave and I wanted to go, um the board voted no. So that just showed me the board wasn't interested in um education for their board members. And that's a shame too.
Right, but not all board members voted no. But yeah, I mean, and I don't know even know why it went up for a vote. I I I don't ever remember that happening ever before. That one time, right before you left the board. But I've been able to go um with Learn. The past few years. This year, I'm not, I'm not attending other um other Learn. Board members are gonna be going.
So I I have a question. Uh maybe Rita, you can answer this. I I can't imagine if there's something in the budget. I what procedure do you use to vote yes or no?
I I don't know why that ever happens. I I don't, you know, why it went up for a vote that time. It never happened before and it, nobody's ever gone again. So. And why you distinguish between cave and the National School Board, which to me is like in a whole different category. Than cave. Um because it's so well, and you meet people, board members from all over the United States and even from other. From other countries, you know, in Puerto Rico and Hawaii. I mean, it's just a wonderful experience and I highly recommend it. For um at least two of our board members. It's better to go with another person. And usually the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell, always used to go every year. So anyway, that's just.
Yeah, we're talking about why, how, what what procedure does the board use? To include a a a member from going to the National School Board Congress. Since Beverly said that the board voted when she was on, maybe it was before your time, when she was on.
Now, Kim was on the board then too, I'm pretty sure. She was on, she voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, maybe you can talk to us later about procedure.
I I just walked in, so I'm not, I'm I'm not in contact, so I don't know what that is.
Okay, so just think about it the next time we get together, maybe we can talk about.
About whether we vote, about whether people go to conferences or not.
Right, well, the board members, when there's money in the budget for it, I didn't vote no that somebody can can't go.
A question? We'll catch up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew, go ahead. I'm I'm turning over.
So my question is, and I don't know that anybody has the answer, perhaps Susan does. What would the cost be for two board members to attend a conference? Well, we. Just divide it up. I don't know what the airfare would be, but you know, just for the two, for the conference.
We could look it up. We could just go online and look it up. I don't.
I guess my question is.
A thousand bucks.
Thousand dollars.
About a thousand bucks. You know, non-participating, not common cube. I don't know, so.
And we're members, so we get a discount. And if you register by a certain day, you get more of a discount um.
Yeah, so if depending on what we qualify for. If we're a member state association, we do early bird, it's eight fifty versus fourteen hundred if we do onsite. I don't know.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm just wondering if there's a a feeling that it would be useful to include the add a budget line. I know we're all scared of adding anything to the budget, but two thousand out of.
It's already there. It's already much more than last year.
Okay, well then. Then and thank you. I'd like to hope that you guys, leadership will consider making that available to board members. Thank you.
Moving on, are we are we finished that hour soon?
So we're going to move on to page five dash eight six. Uh this is superintendent uh office services. Uh for FTEs, we have the superintendent, assistant assistant superintendent, director of HR. As well as seven point four FTE uh clerical uh that work uh in the central office. And just a note under the, under the program description that uh the cost for the town pension, which covers uh three groups. The custodial maintenance tech group, the school secretaries and the CEO staff. Um is shared equally between this uh this function and the next one, the business office function. Um if we go down to five dash eight seven, expenses. Uh under salaries, uh we have put in a two percent uh increase under administration as well as clerical. You'll notice a under one fourteen, an increase of fifty-seven and one thirty-four, a decrease of forty thousand. Uh that's a shift due to a pending retirement. Uh that that we were making an adjustment for.
And we'll be able to showcase that when we give you this week, the superintendent's adjusted budget. So any of these things that need to be tweaked because of retirements, we'll be sharing that with you. So you'll see what it's actually coming out to.
Uh so overall salaries and wages of two point nine percent. Uh under employee benefits, um I'll point out a line two, one, three. That's the town retirement, uh town pension that I mentioned before. Um that's, this is based upon an estimate that we had uh at the time we put the book together. Uh we are working with the town to get a final number for for this. Uh and we are uh will pr- represent that as well. On the adjusted uh superintendent's. Uh under purchase services, uh which is professional services and legal, legal services. Professional services such as fingerprinting, background checks, legal updates. Uh and then the actual legal services from law office. Um is a an increase of ninety-four dollars over last year's budget or this year's budgets. The purchased property services, uh repair of equipment such as the postage machine, laminator. Uh office equipment and um. Copiers. So uh an increase of eighty-two dollars at rental for those same machines, uh those same office machines, uh an increase of thirty-seven dollars. Uh that's an increase of one percent over this year's budget. Uh down under other purchase services, postage, uh we are experiencing a decrease in the usage of postage. So we're uh proposing a decrease of two thousand dollars there. Uh with the other uh areas left flat, so a decrease of two thousand dollars for other purchase services. Um general admin supplies or total supplies, I'm sorry, are down uh or proposed down to five hundred dollars. And under dues, uh the dues, there's an increase of five hundred forty dollars. Uh dues are for um National Association of Federally Impacted Schools, uh for CAPS. For National Association for Giving to Talented, some uh HR associations as well as Chamber of Commerce. So the total amount for uh the superintendent office services uh is an increase of just under fifty thousand dollars. Or three point one percent over this year's budget.
I'm gonna, I'll recognize William and then Rita.
Um can you explain town retirement for me? Like, what is that?
So there there are three groups that uh that are eligible for the town uh pension plan. That's the custodial maintenance tech group, the school secretaries, and then the the central office staff.
And so if it's from the town, why do we have to put money into it?
So the employees uh uh contribute a percent or portion. And then the uh the the town. Contributes another portion.
Do you have thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean. Do none of them are on our payroll, but they're still on our payroll, you know, still on our budget. Uh the retired, these are retired, not this isn't the contribution for active members contributing to their. You know, expected retirement.
They're the ones who have retired and are getting a pension, right?
Well, it's so uh we get in a report annually uh from the actuaries that look at the pension plan. And they calculate out what the contribution is from the town and from the Board of Ed.
Good, maybe Ken. Maybe you could tell us um Ken exactly how many people. Are in the, are on that line, because some are. It's still in the central office and they're not retired, correct?
They're getting a pension?
Well, it's there.
Are you saying the active, active um recipients or?
Yeah, are there any active recipients that that put into town retirement?
Is, yeah, so so active employees?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah, they're they're the the uh the custodial maintenance tech group, the school secretaries and the central office staff.
Right.
I don't have a number of how many people it is.
Right, but it would be good to know how many people that is. And um. My, I have a couple of questions. One question would be if the group insurance other. If that will go down because there's one, there'll be one less, like, looks like there's one less administrative. Administrative assistant or and ad- clerical and admin? So does that affect all the other lines?
So there there is no change in the FTEs for clerical administration. Uh what we're doing up above is is we're shifting. Um because we we are, there is a pending retirement, uh and we are shifting uh folks around. But it's gonna be the same number of people uh this year versus last uh next year.
Okay, and then my next question is the travel for administrators. And travel for workshops and convention is almost ten thousand dollars. And that seems to be excessive when you consider the board line is four thousand two hundred. And there are many more board members who could, you know, receive professional development. So I just want to, you know, be aware of that line. And also every year, we we talk about. You build in something for administration for raises with, before you talk to the board. So what did you do this year?
Uh there's a two percent uh increase uh in there.
Okay, now that's something I I believe the board would really, I mean, I'd like to discuss it as a board member and maybe get that down to one or one point five percent. Um I I I think every year it's two percent, two percent, two percent. It just really has been adding up. And the salaries are great, you know, um everyone works hard. But I do feel that every single year, and we've also talked about accountability. Maybe there are some people that are working a lot harder and deserve more than two percent. And maybe there are other people that aren't, and you know, we need to to be, have evaluations in place. So anyway, that's my thoughts about this section of the budget.
Beth?
Um Ken, I was just wondering, on the clerical temp, it was last year in FY twenty-three, it was forty thousand. And um this year is zeroed out. Can you tell me why you zeroed that out? We're not using temps anymore?
So uh what we're doing is we're shifting uh due to a pending retirement. Uh so we're 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 attempting to to uh uh maybe to have a a full-time um uh that that point four be a full-time. Or not, not not change the the number of FTEs, but uh uh change the classification um. Uh but it's it's the same number of employees this year versus last year or next year.
So the the temp employee just went into the permanent employee slot.
We 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 put that in there for classification, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So Rita, would you like to have your question about the two percent go to finance and facilities?
No, I I think that's that's a board discussion. And we usually have that, but you know, when we have it is June. And then Ken comes to us and says, well, we already built in two percent. In June and we go to discuss it. It's too late then. I think, I asked last year that we had this like in November while the budget was being built. And not do it in June. Because then, you know, they say, well, but we we already put it in the budget. So I I believe this discussion should be ahead of time. Not after the budget's already in place and it's voted on, but before. And if it goes to finance and facility, that's gonna be too late. By the time they meet and it comes back to the board, the budget will already be voted on.
Well, we won't have a committee at the whole meeting. Did I just do something?
We're we're talking about budgets now. I mean, this is fine. This is what we're doing, budgets.
We're trying to get a um gallery view. I'm sorry, we're working on the. We're getting help here.
I don't have that either. I should.
Okay, I guess this is as good as it's gonna be. All right, sorry.
You know, when we talk about our, when we do the contracts for our, you know, teachers and our administrators and our peer professionals. We know exactly what their raises, you know, are gonna be. We bargain, we bargain that. We need to do that with our central office staff also the same way, but not do it after the fact. But ahead of time. And last year, they said, we said, well, let's do it in November, like, you know, before, while the budget's being built. And that that didn't happen. And then again, here we are presented with it and it's already built in. So we can unbuild it, basically.
I'm gonna recognize Jay and then William.
Um I just want to mention that with inflation at six point four five percent. And the social security increase at five point nine percent. I'm wondering if Ken could contact his colleagues to get a sense of what's going on statewide. Um with administrative raises. Um I'm just not sure that this is the year with these these soaring numbers. To uh to be cutting the administrators. Um so maybe a little more data for our discussion uh would be helpful.
I mean, we we do use as as a basis, we use the administrative, our uh internal administrative contract as a, as a, as a guide. The administrative contract for this year is an increase of two point two five, um just to give you um some context. But I can certainly reach out to the CASBO group and find out if there's any information in regards to statewide uh administrative uh wages.
Thank you.
William?
So we, so you're saying that it's two point two five is the increase in salary for?
For the, for the contracted uh uh union.
But not for superintendent. That's two percent.
We put it in here as two percent.
That, so if we did one point five, we'd save two thousand seven hundred dollars on the budget? Okay, thank you.
Well, uh uh this is just, just so just to be clear, this is just three of the administrators. I believe there are seven.
But still, it's a spread from this aspect right here, one oh five, that would be a twenty-seven hundred dollars savings. Great, thank you.
Jay, do you still have a question?
No, I'm all set. I'm sorry, I thought I lowered it.
All right, so hopefully we can have that um as part of the discussion. Okay.
I I think the difference can, with the administrator's contract, which we bargain with. They have a much higher co-pay for their health insurance than the. Central office administrators do. And there aren't just two. And it's much more than that because it's two percent across the board for all the clerical also. It's not just administration. You're putting the two percent in. So it's all the administrators plus all the clerical in the cent- in the central office. Um but we do, they have um much, much lower co-pay than our administrators are up to about. What is it, twenty-three, twenty-four percent for their co-pay? And I know the central office staff is well below that. So th- those are things, it's different when you bargain a contract with a group of people than it is when it's just automatically put in. And there's no discussion about it. That's that's what I'm talking about.
Beverly?
Uh thank you. Um I agree with Rita. I think it is something that the board should talk about. And I thought we had a discussion last year about raising the co-pay of central office people. Up to what the administrators were paying for co-pay.
Yeah, there there has been adjustment in the in the amount of the co-pay. I don't know those exact amounts, um but there was an increase.
Can you, can you get that for us? So we can see how far apart the administrators' co-pay is compared to the um. Central office people?
Any other question? Great, moving on.
All right, page five dash eight eight. This is the business office uh for FTEs, uh one business manager and six uh clerical. Uh and then I'll note again that um the cost of the town pension, this is the other half that we saw in in the last function. Uh is is recorded here. Uh so down on page five dash eight nine. You'll see the the costs. Um so there is uh the uh, there's an administrator and the six um. Uh administration, the two percent increase uh that we talked about before. Um if you notice down on line two, two thirteen, town retirement, there's that other half of the of that. Of that uh that cost uh being uh reported here. Uh overall, a four point six percent increase to employee benefits. Uh under professional services is the cost of our audit services as well as upgrades to the uh e-finance system. Uh and that's an increase of uh five hundred dollars or one percent. Uh no change in other purchase services, uh decrease. Uh, no change in other purchase services, uh, a decrease of five hundred dollars under supplies. And an increase of twenty-five dollars on the dues, and that's, uh, our, um, membership to the CASBO. That's the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials. Uh, so a total increase for this, uh, section of thirty thousand, uh, six hundred eighty-six dollars or three percent.
So if any questions are coming?
I, I have a question. Um, Ken, where, where are you traveling to? Like one thousand eight hundred dollars? Are there, is there a conference that you attend?
It's, it's, it's traveling about the district and it is attending, uh, CASBO events and conferences, uh, that they have throughout the year.
Okay. Okay. So then, then again, the line, um, two thirteen, town retirement, if you could break out for us, how many people that is? Uh, I didn't realize it was over a half million dollars that we're putting in. So it would be nice to see what, who, how many people are, I didn't know why you broke it up and how many people are in each group.
Yeah, th- this is the way we, we've always broken it out between the, these two, uh, uh, functions. Um, uh, but it's, it's a number that we get from directly from the town and they do have the number of participants on that report. So I just have to get that, uh, for the most recent period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on.
All right, shoot, this is our last section. Yeah.
Having fun yet, Ken?
No.
This board has done a tremendous job getting through this book.
Uh, here we are at the, uh, page five dash nine zero. This is school administration. Uh, the first, uh, section is our FTEs. These are our principals and assistant principals at the schools. Um. And so in total, twenty, uh, uh, administrators at the school level. Uh, the one thirteen and one thirty-three is clerical at the schools, um, and you'll, uh, broken out by school. Uh, you'll see a total of thirteen, uh, for that group. And then our security, um, uh, slash supervision, but the security guards. Um, we have, uh, four point five in this year, but we are proposing five point five for next year, an increase of one. Um, we currently do have some of these folks, uh, on staff. They're being funded through the RFSER, uh, grant. And we are proposing to, uh, pay for those through the board operations. A total of five point five, uh, between the two, uh, secondary schools. Um, then down under expenses. Uh, we have the principal, assistant principals, then the clerical, which are all per contract. Uh, the increase in the security line is a two percent increase plus the, uh, the one point O FTE discussed, uh, on the previous page. Uh, so overall, a two point four percent increase in salaries. Uh, employee benefits, uh, an increase of four point five percent. That's mainly due to the increase in group insurance costs. Uh, down under professional services, um, or purchase services, sorry. Um, we have, uh, it's actually a decrease of eight hundred dollars. A big line there is line three, three, one, professional services. That's the two SROs that are stationed, one at each of the, um, secondary schools. Um, I, I have an updated number for that, um. So we will, we'll be giving you that, uh, with the adjusted superintendent's, uh, budget, uh, when we look at that, uh, next time. Uh, repair of equipment, this is repair of, uh, instruments, uh, other office equipment. Uh, there is an increase here. Um, it looks like in the prior year, we did, we did spend ten thousand six fifteen. Uh, so it looks like we do need, uh, to fund this, uh, section more. Under other purchase services, uh, some up, some down, but over, overall, an increase of seven hundred dollars, a two point five percent. For supplies, um, it's a, uh, it's a decrease of, um, uh, three, thirty-five hundred dollars or nine percent. For equipment, uh, an increase of a thousand dollars. Um, this is for, the, last year, we bought a special printer and some bookshelves. We're anticipating we might need to do the same again this year. That's for the high school. And then finally under dues, uh, there is a, there is an increase of seventy-two hundred dollars. Uh, that is coming from the high school, uh, that is due to, uh, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars for Ed Rising and forty-five hundred dollars for NNDCC. I, I don't know exactly what that acronym stands for.
National Naval Defense Cadet Corps.
Um, so overall for dues and fees, that's an increase of fifty, uh, fifty-four point seven percent. So for total school administration, it's an increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, or two point seven percent over the current year budget.
I'm going to recognize William and then Liz.
For, uh, three, three, one, professional services, you mentioned SRO. What does that stand?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I should have said that's a security resource officer. So it's a, it's a police officer stationed at the, one at the middle school, one at the high school.
Liz? Um, Ken, when we were talking about, um, the, the staff at the high school and the middle school. We were talking about how the, um, curriculum coordinators, they're point four one place or point five one placement. Is that, um, is that indicated here in this part?
Not in this part. So the, those, those curriculum coordinators, point five of them is in that other section, um.
I think it's teaching staff.
Teaching and learning, yeah, something like that. And the other half, they're in.
Their salaries.
They're, they're in, yeah, but like whatever their, uh, it's like ELA would be in like JARs, for instance.
Oh.
So, so they're broken up half teacher, half administrator.
For subject area.
Yep.
Do you have a follow-up on that?
I'm just a little, I, I'm mulling it over.
You're mulling that over. Okay, so should I stay with the mole or do I need, okay. So I'm going to recognize Matthew and then Rita.
Thank you. Um, going back to the security line that we looked at, Ken. Uh, you may, the board may have discussed this at the one meeting that I missed. If so, I apologize for plowing old ground. But some months ago, I'd asked about, uh, security at our elementary schools. And I don't know what, if anything, the board discussed on that. Uh, I'm not suggesting that we need police officers as SROs. But it would seem to me that we need some, at the minimum, some cross-training for staff so we can have a designated person at each elementary school who has some reasonable amount of training to respond to emergencies and be a liaison with police authorities when they please fire whomever ambulance when they get there. Um, could you comment on that? Is, is this something the board has discussed?
I can, I can comment on that, Matthew. Um. What we have is the DARE program at each of the elementary schools and with that, what I've come to find out is that those DARE officers also are the ones who are checking in on the schools on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, Thames River is the only city school. And they happen to have a DARE officer who's connected to Thames and is in Thames quite often. So I brought that to the police chief's attention as something to have that go-to person. Couple of them have the dogs that come in and the kids really are very fond of the dogs. And I think just having a police officer who knows the building, knows the staff, has walked the halls and is doing more of that community policing. Um, it has been a real comfort to our principals. They've actually told me that. That they really appreciated that more so than when I asked them, would you rather have a security guard? They really thought having maybe additional time from those SR, from those, you know, DARE officers who, you know, could be part SRO, but not full-time. So that's, that's what I've gotten from my staff when I've asked the question. And I talked to Chief Asaro a little bit about how that could possibly happen through a grant, maybe to extend their time.
So that, that's, that's very reassuring. It would be my hope, and I'm only speaking as one out of nine, that at every one of the schools, we have some type of presence. Uh, how administration chooses to structure that is beyond my pay grade, to put it mildly. Um, but if a problem arises and it might be a medical emergency, it might be an accident, whatever it happens to be, that there's somebody who's designated in each school to perform that cross-function. Uh, if that's not something we need to do with the budget at this time, I easily can accept that. But if we don't do it now, Kim, could we put that on our docket for some talk cow in the future?
I'm, I'm.
I'm writing it down.
Down now.
As an agenda top. And I certainly agree with you. I, and I think the, um, I think the administrators in the buildings in elementary would also say that they really appreciate that partnership that they have and they probably would like to see them there even more often. So we've communicated that to the police chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Um, I'm going to recognize, um, Rita, Bev, and then Liz.
Okay, um, you know, oftentimes we hear that, you know, seventy-six percent of this budget or more is staff. So the only thing we can do really to decrease, you know, some of this is, um, is staffing. And when you look at the area high school around us, we're the only high school and middle school that has a principal and three assistants. I think it's time now to really think about our budget and think about, if you look at Eastline High School, they have a principal, they have, um, one assistant principal is for grades nine and twelve. And then the other one is grades ten and eleven. I, they have more students than we have in our school. So I really think we need to start thinking a little bit. If we're going to have to tighten our belt and reduce this budget, we're going to have to think about staffing. So it's just something I want to put out there and I want to, you know, I mean, it's, it's sort of all, there's a overabundance to me of administrators. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Beverly?
Um, um, I'm just going to piggyback on what Rita just said. Not only that, it's the staffing that we're going to have to, have to acquire. That's the, the met, the staff people that we're going to have to acquire that are now being funded by grants. And then eventually they're going to come over to our budget. And that's going to really be a, a big increase also. So those are, I, Rita, we really have to take a, a look at our staffing. We do seem to have a lot of staff. And, um, Ken, can I ask you a question? Could you explain the security line again to me, the one twenty-eight?
Sure, these, these are security guards that are at the, uh, the middle and high school.
Okay, now, did you say they were funded by OPESR and now they're in our budget? I, I missed that.
Okay, uh, so we, we do have more than, we have, uh, four point five, uh, in the current year budget. We do have more than that. Uh, there, there are some, they are being funded in part by the, uh, by the RFSER grant. And so that, that's, that's why we're, we're, uh, saying adding, uh, at, requesting to add one, uh, one FTE to this budget so that, uh, when our bester goes, we will, we will have, uh, taken it onto this budget.
How many are being funded by OPESR?
Um, I don't have that particular number in front of me.
We can get that number to you though.
Yep.
And that's the kind of thing I'm talking about now, that, you know, we're funding these security offices from OPESR and eventually they're going to be coming to the Board of Education's budget. So if the budget already is increased four percent this year, can you imagine what it's going to be in years to follow? Oh, did you hear what I said?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got Liz and then I want Andrea.
Okay, Ken. I've gone and I'm looking at the, um, for the administration and I'm thinking about those curriculum coordinators. And I'm on five dash twenty-four, which is for social studies. Who, no, I go and flip to that one, right? And could you please, I see where this bitch high school, nine point three. Now I understand that point three is the curriculum coordinator for the teaching element, correct?
I, I have, I don't have to look.
What page are you on?
Nine, five dash two four.
And we're looking at high school?
Yeah. It says nine point three. So I'm taking it the point three is the point three that that person, um, now it's Laura Johnson, is this is where this is her teaching assignment. And then the point seven would be administrated.
Um, so it's point five of the, of whatever position is actually vacant when I, when I put this together. It's point five, uh, of a teacher, but there's also point seven five of another teacher.
So it's not point, nine point three, it's nine point five?
It's nine, it's actually nine point two five. This, this rounded up. Uh, so it is, um, it's, uh.
Was this done though, when the person was in place, who was at the high school? And maybe we need to adjust that to put it in the right place perhaps, or no?
No, no, I, I think, I think this is, this is correct. Um, I have um, eight full FTEs. I got a point five of the, of the other part of the, uh, the curriculum coordinator and then a point seven five of another position. It's also split between this and another function. But it's, it's in total, uh, nine point two five.
So what, what, what do we have for teaching? We have eight teachers.
Eight full FTEs.
Right.
We got a point five FTE and a point seven five FTE.
Oh, because the other part of the position is in world language. Of that person, that's a point two five.
Humanities, the humanity, oh.
And that, we still have that Latin class, so that's why she's duly certified.
Okay.
That just made sense to me. Thank you.
Yes, world languages, you're right.
Yep.
And so. So that's for their teaching assignment. Where in this budget do you show their administrative assignment? Is that on this?
We did review that.
Yeah, we were.
That was under teaching and learning.
She's, she's just trying to assimilate.
Was under, was it under your?
Five dash seven six.
But, okay.
Teaching and learning.
Okay. Oh, okay. I got it. I'm sorry. I just couldn't remember and I was trying to figure this out and it wasn't making sense to me, but I see it now. Thank you.
Under one oh five and one oh eight, you see it.
I see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just that with those split, uh, groups, they're all over the place and I almost feel like they need to be, it really needs to be spelled out this a lot clearer for, for us to see that. Not a criticism, believe me. There's a reason I was a social studies teacher for thirty years.
Yeah, but I think.
It's hard.
And, and this is not a criti- criticism. That is a, a, not a unique position, but that curriculum coordinator between, between six to twelve. And I don't know if there's someplace where, like in a narrative to, to say, you'll find this on budget line, blank, blank, for that piece so that people can kind of match it up, match it up.
Because it is confusing.
Yeah, I, I have a note to, to, to update the program, uh, description for clarify curriculum coordinator, uh.
There you go. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking. We can say the other point five is, can be found on this page. Yeah.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, I forgot. Andrea, it just happens to be seeing by my.
This was a question for Susan. I'm always hearing about our fear of running out of grants, but they seem to be out there for the asking, as it were. So I, I'm, my, my first question is, can we apply for a grant? And what's the real threat out, out there of us not assisting, getting or gathering another grant for anything?
Well, I think Beverly brought up a good point. We certainly have been paying attention to what's in our bester and we know that that's going to end. Um, there is something called the CAPS blueprint, which gives, uh, you know, a lot of credence for at, when you're at the cliff. There's also this bill, five oh oh three. Um, should that be passed, that will absolutely safeguard. But we've also prioritized in those grants, what will we need to keep on doing? And that's, you know, a very select few staff. And then what? And then what can we, do we not need to have? So we are keeping all of that in mind, but for instance, we're looking at um the DOD grants. For next year to get another million dollar grant that would help us with some of the magnet partnerships that you might even see in this budget, you know, the project dough. So there's some things that we might be able to take care of, you know, um. Should we get that grant that would help us?
We really shouldn't be all that anxious about calling up.
I I know that we get a report from our grants director. Like, I think I get a report from her every week and it's amazing how many she's actually tackled. She. Um, we went for one that was in special ed and we were hoping to secure a social worker through that and continue that. But it it was given to other towns and not ours. So there are times that we don't receive the grants. But there are more often times that we do receive, and I think having uh grants. You know, director here and knowing that we're constantly keeping our eyes open for those grants and what is really doable, and she's so good at writing these and collecting the data with Phil's help. That, you know, we've been very fortunate and I I figure, you know, we've got the right people on the bus to help us continue to look for those things, and we do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I I'm sad to say that the initial. View of the budget. Is done. Now the hard hard work is.
Beverly wants to speak.
I Beverly, do you?
I just have a quick question. Susan, is it possible for you to um? Give us how many staff members we have added in the last five years or the last four years? So we could see how the staff has grown. How many, you know, what was the staff like?
We have that on a chart, but I can get it back out to you. I think one of Ken's nifty charts has that exactly like what we what we secured over time with the. The three, four different essers, including the R P S R um. Most of the DOD grants, they have project directors that um. You know, will be doing it for the five years and then when it's done, it's done. So anything that staffing wise. Tends to be there, the world language we put in for two additional teachers, but that's covered for the next five years. And we can actually apply for another world language grant that could continue on that journey. So. Those are the things that Andrea was bringing up, that there are other grants that can help us along the way as well. But we can, I'll definitely look for that. I feel like I have something in my mind, Beverly, when you asked me that question. I can see it. So I'll make sure you get a copy.
Matthew.
Uh, Susan, uh, after the budget is done. Thank God, could you share with us what languages you have in mind for the uh word language program?
Yes, and I think there's probably even another um. Survey coming out to the public to to get more response from our community. I think that would be right now, we really have. French and um Spanish in our schools, but we certainly can look and and try to, you know. Figure out what else the community is looking for.
There, I wonder if there might not be some really significant grant opportunities if we were to be able to offer Chinese.
Well, and I think there's talk about how we can collaborate as a rest.
So I'm gonna, this is great conversation.
I'm sorry, I'm off topic.
This is, no, no, I I have this down as an agenda item. It's, I I think what you're talking about, Matthew, is I think that we're all anxious to kind of get back. To the business of, well, this is the business of the board, but to get back to kind of talking about things that we would like to see or not to see. So I have that down. Beverly, your hand was up? And now it's not.
I now, I just want us to keep in mind, and I know I'm on the Board of Education and I'm all in for students and what they need and staff. But let's keep in mind, even though we talk about inflation going up and that's the reason for raises and stuff like that. A lot of taxpayers aren't getting raises. And they experience inflation too. So we have to keep all that in mind as we are going through this budget. And going to present it to the town and to the R T M.
Point will take him, Beverly. All right, so we're gonna be moving. Down to the review um of the D O D supplemental impact aid, which is attachment one.
I'm gonna share the schedule on the screen. Um, so the D O D supplemental impact aid is uh is our funds that we received from the Department of Defense that's based upon the impact aid. Uh, numbers that we collect for the Department of Education. Um, and last year, if this first column before the yellow uh one. Is uh what actually happened in F Y twenty-two. Uh, we received four hundred and seventy-one thousand seven forty-six, and that was based upon F Y twenty-one um. Uh, impact date forms that we received. Um, this is how we utilize the funds. Uh, we we have, we pretty much uh. There there's no um, we can use these funds in any way that we see fit. Uh, we have used this for technology purchases uh pretty exclusively. Um, uh, up until now. Um, and so you can see last year, we purchased some software, uh, we uh purchased some projection devices, that's the um Peramethian boards. And uh, we paid the first installment of the staff devices uh that we had talked about. Uh, so the ending balance for the D O D supplemental impact aid uh account was a million three sixty-five eight thirty. Uh, we bring that to this year, that's the yellow column. Uh, and we received at the in the August of this year, um, actually of twenty twenty-two, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, so very similar to the amount that we received in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then we spent it in a very similar, we're we're planning on spending in a very similar fashion. Um, uh, software, uh. Supplement our software purchases as well as uh I T equipment to maintain the network and uh staff devices. Um, you'll all see that we also have um, uh, there are some um mandated uh universal screeners and interventions that we need to um. Uh, to to do something with, and so we have put uh something in here for those those items uh at seventy-five thousand each. So we're anticipating at the end of this uh this uh school year to be uh about a million uh eighty-four thousand.
And I just want to say that those screeners and interventions were piloting some of that, and that's gonna go forecast over to the next year or two. So that that's not just a one-year shot, that's a, that'll take care of us for a few years.
And then if you look at our budget for twenty twenty-four, uh, we're hoping to receive a very similar amount um on. Uh, next year, based upon this year's uh impact aid forms, and we plan on um utilizing in a very similar fashion uh uh for technology. Uh, in the past, we have used these this fund to fund our Chromebook one-to-one initiative, uh, which we have not needed to do uh due to getting um uh. Those Chromebooks from a different uh a different uh funding source. Uh, so we would anticipate at the end of this year to be somewhere in the nine hundred, nine hundred four thousand dollar um area. Uh, but what this particular uh report does is it it makes a worst-case scenario. Uh, that Groton doesn't get these funds uh in in the subsequent years. Uh, we have to maintain a population of nineteen and a half percent or more of uh of of um military dependent enrollment. Um, so, you know, if if that were to happen, we wouldn't, we would stop receiving this uh this funding, uh, and so if we continued with our uh our Chromebook initiative. Um, we would run out in like two years.
By twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, definitely by twenty twenty-seven, yep.
We're getting people to fill in those impact aid forms and we're really being very hopeful and. I know we have central office staff and and school staff that are working very hard to make sure we've accounted for every single student possible.
But it's possible that the population were decreased to less than nineteen and a half percent, which case that would be, uh, that would impact us receiving those funds.
Rita?
Um, I just want to know why you forecast that we're gonna have fewer than nineteen point five percent military dependence. I've never seen that before. And I hope that that doesn't happen, but I mean, just the fact that you forecasted it, where, how are we gonna be able to absorb? That amount of money? I I just don't, I just can't see how we could, you know, not have this in our budget. And this is a supplemental impact aid. Does part of this D O D go also to the town?
No, this goes directly to to the to the Board of Ed. I mean, it goes to the town for the Board of Ed's use, I guess I should say.
It comes, it does come to us.
Yeah.
They were, the town, though, does receive um four million dollars or their house. That goes directly, that's part of their revenue source.
Yes, that's what I thought, yeah.
So the reason that we're showing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I mean, so why are you showing that? I mean, I would think that with General Dynamics increasing their employees and meaning if. People live in Groton and work at General Dynamics. That does count as mil as this part of this is, isn't that correct?
So they count for impact aid, this does not count for the supplemental impact aid, for the D O D is only going, is only uh taking into account actual dependence of military personnel.
Okay, and you feel that it's gonna go down?
Well, we 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 have Harvard right above that nineteen and a half percent, so it's it's a real possibility. Um, we do everything in our in our power not to, but. You know, it it could happen, and so I think it's good for us to think about. What would happen if that if that were to occur, and that's that's one of the reasons that we maintain this fund is so that we can um. We can continue with the with the initiative that we started and then have have time to make plans on what to do.
Having Balfour Beatty um right here in Groton. Does really draw in a big portion of the military community. And there was a a time then they they were renting those apartments to non-military. I had heard that with the Columbia class. Being built and um stationed here, that there would be the need for Balfour Beatty to make sure and secure more apartments for military, so. I have that hopefulness, Rita.
Yeah.
And we're actually, we're actually going to an event at the Navy Rec Center. Um, like, really, staff members from across all the schools, we're setting up a table. I'm gonna hopefully get some military spouses who would like a job here, and we're really going to, we try to showcase Groton as a very viable place to live for military families.
That's great, thank you.
I'm gonna recognize William.
So with the uh impact aid, are we limited in regards to what we can? How we can invest that? Because I'm seeing our interest aren't as. Really.
So so it goes to the town, the town puts it into an interest-bearing account, that's that's what, that's where this comes from.
The town.
The town maintains control of.
I thought they gave it to us.
It's it's earmarked for us, but it goes to the town.
And they put it into.
This interest-bearing account.
The piggy bank?
Essentially.
Wow.
There's also impact aid that goes directly to the town and the town can use it as they so fit. This one is absolutely like it goes to the town, but it's 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 written for only Board of Ed uses.
Yeah, well, so my, I mean, because working with other organizations, there are certain grants that we get or that we can only. Place it in certain types of accounts, it's limited, like we can't put it into a specific C D or something like, but if there's no limitations, then. The town. Owns the responsibility that they're not making any interest on this amount of money, especially when it's a lot of that. You know, even if we say that we're going to go above nineteen, below nineteen point five. And it'll deteriorate, we still should be looking at, like, right now, there are some excellent CDs for larger organizations. So at least. Make us a little bit more money.
We can talk to the town to find out what 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 if any limitations there are and what options there are.
Okay. Matthew.
Uh, thank you, William, for anticipating my question. I was going to phrase it slightly differently. If we would be willing to, uh, now I know it's the town, see if we could have a conference with the town and see if they'd be willing to get into something as speculative as. One-to-three-month U S Treasuries that are paying four point three to four point seven percent right now. Uh, I understand that the four hundred seventy-three thousand is not going to sit in the account for a year, but uh. Uh, we should be able to at least double, if not triple, that figure without any risk to to anybody. Could, is that something we could chat about with John Bird?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Andrea. I have a question about the DOD funds that go to the town, but earmarked for us. And that is. Do we always expand all of that, those those funds?
Uh, so are you talking D O D supplemental impact aid or are you talking?
Supplemental.
D O D.
Yeah.
So these funds, they stay in there until we until we expend them, so there's no limitation. Uh, to how we can spend it or how long it takes.
Oh, I see.
Historically, we have used it for our technology integration, for networking, for software, for. Chromebooks, releasing the teachers' equipment, so that has been since Mike and I arrived. I don't know before that what was happening.
It was the same.
Was it the same? Okay.
For all these years, it's always gone to technology and and computers, and there was this long twenty-year plan that, yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Any other questions about the review of the supplemental impact aid? If not, let's move on to um operation budget plus grants, which could be attached to.
All right, I'm putting that up on the screen. Uh, so this this is a um a schedule we put together a couple of years ago because there was a question as to what is our total operating cost, and so. What it does is it takes our operating budget and it adds in the the grants um that we um. Uh, we talked about previously, uh, the categorical, the competitive, and uh the coronavirus relief grants. And so you can see uh on this schedule in this first box that um.
It's actually not up.
It's not.
Well, unless I look. A lot like, there it is.
There it goes, I don't know. Um, so now it's up. And so you can see that um uh total operating costs, including grants, if we're looking at the F Y twenty-four budget is eighty-nine million seven thirty-three. So that's a eighty-three that is in the superintendent budget plus those grants. Uh, the next box down is uh, it just takes the operating uh budget, the number from above. It removes the revenue that comes directly to the town, and that's those grants, uh, the competitive and the um. Uh, categorical and coronavirus relief virus grants. And then the revenue that's received directly by the town. And so uh there you'll see the portion of the budget that uh is funded by the town, and you'll see F Y twenty-three, forty-eight million three sixty-two. And F Y twenty-four, fifty-two million uh four eighteen. Um, there was a a question as to the increase to the town's uh portion. If I can, I'm gonna stop sharing on this and share, I did a little calculation. If I can find it. So here's, this this is that same schedule if it gets up there. Uh, so the increase in town uh contribution in dollars is uh four million fifty-five thousand. That divided by the previous year is that eight eight point four percent of the eight percent that um that uh we had been talking about. That's where that eight percent comes from, just so we're clear.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then the the bottom box is just a calculation of uh what portion of property tax uh collected supports the uh the Board of Ed budget. So you see for F Y twenty-three, we were around forty-six point four percent. We don't have what the uh projected property tax to be collected for this year is, so that's not yet available, that. That's that we'll know that once a a final budget is uh is is provided.
William.
So have we been about forty-six percent historically?
Um. I can tell you last year.
Sixty-three? No, it's not sixty-three.
Uh, we were uh. Forty-eight point four percent in um in F Y twenty-two.
I'm not understanding, Ken, could you explain that? I'm seeing sixty-three point one percent for this year's budget and how would that compare with last year?
Okay, if we if we can go down back to the next attachment, that. Okay, if we if we can go down back to the next attachment, that might help. I think those are the numbers that you're quoting. So I'm gonna put that up on the on the board here. So this this is attachment number three, actually. And these are the revenues to support the Board of Ed budget and you'll see here under. Oh, gosh, this this delay is killing me.
It is absolutely very.
When you were talking on the first one?
Yeah.
I was gonna let you know that Kathy Chase was up there and and it wasn't up there, it wasn't up there for a very long time. The first one took longer than the second one did.
Well. It says I'm sharing.
Ken is fighting with his computer.
What's visible now is the lower half, what's visible is the lower half, lower half of attachment three without the picture.
Here's the top part with with the nice paragraph, but what I really think we should concentrate on is down below. This 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 breaks out all of the different revenues that are received. Right in about the middle of the chart is the town portion, and so this is where. Last year, sixty percent of the budget was contributed by the town. This year, it's around sixty one percent. So next year, we're the proposal we currently have is sixty three percent of the budget being supported by by town.
But we haven't brought some of the adjusted and getting getting some of your ideas along the way will help to do that.
Right.
Matthew, did that answer your question?
It it answered the question, but I have another question when you're when it's convenient.
Why don't you just continue on?
Okay. I mentioned this last year. And I'll mention it again, it may not be what the board wants to do. But from my perspective. The total amount that we expend on the budget as it was proposed initially by the superintendent, I'm gonna go with that, though I understand there are going to be adjustments. Was just over eighty three million. I would like to see a pie chart. That showed that eighty three million in there. And once we put in that eighty, once we have the the full budget there. And we have a slice of pie that is all the grants, we will see that the town tax share is lower. And I think it's only fair. If we're going to talk about what our actual expenditures are going to be. At some place, we should be demonstrating with a with a visual. What the total package is. There'll be a part that'll be town, the part that'll be state, the part maybe federal miscellaneous and grants. And that will demonstrate, I hope, to the public. Clearly communicate that we are really. Try very hard, I don't want to say we're successful, we try very hard to be good stewards of the of of our school and the and the impact on our town.
So Matthew, if I understand you correctly. You're saying the missing part of the pie is the additional grants that come directly to the district that have been competitive and categorical?
You understand me correctly because from my perspective. That is part of what what Susan and her team administer, they administered the entire package. Unless I think it's fair. I think it's fair that 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 piece should be a part of the story that we're telling the town. And they will see the dollars will still be the the higher dollars. But it it will it will shrink, I can't, I didn't do the math. But it will shrink that sixty three percent to below below sixty percent. I can't give you an exact number. That that doesn't. Alter at all. The tax burden, the amount of dollars that we're going to have to raise. I'm not trying to say we're gonna play a shell game. But it will give the public a sense of how active our administration and board is in seeking funds to give the. Proper education to our kids at a minimum cost to taxpayers.
Thank you, I love that idea. Matthew, Matthew, that's actually a really good idea.
So would that just be a different shade of gray?
Yeah, well, and we, yeah, we'd have to.
Make it a different color, make it green, make it green, it's 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 not.
Yeah, I like green.
It would increase the total pie and then break out more.
Because it will reflect what we have on this chart with the eighty nine million versus the eighty three. And so we would include that as another. Revenue that comes directly to Groton Public Schools to pay for. All of that P D and other things that we do.
Now, the administration will decide, there are two ways to do it that I can perceive. One is just to change the presentation from to what I suggested. But that'll be a departure from a previous year. So perhaps. Perhaps we want to put in two pies and say, here's the way we would have presented it if it were last year. But you know, we've raised X million dollars from grants. And so here's here's what we think the true picture is. So you guys determine how you want to do it.
So we are done with this portion of our budget. We have heard from Superintendent Austin and her staff. About the budget that she is proposing and why. And my understanding is is that on the thirteenth. Susan and her staff are gonna come back. With the. Adjusted budget. The adjusted budget. But I want to get it to you as soon as I can, within the next couple of days. I want you to see it. And any questions that you have when you see it. That we haven't contemplated, I'm gonna go through this book, we've been going through this book and everything that you've commented on. Like F T Es and looking at all aspects of the budget. We are really working hard to try to figure that out, so. Certainly give me feedback if you'd like. But we are gonna meet and that whole. Time is going to be dedicated to the adjusted budget and other things that you might. Forecast. Jay, did you have your hand up?
Yes, as much as I like Matthew's idea. Of showing the the total revenues and expenses, the. The fact of the matter still remains that the four point nine eight percent. Budget increase. Is amplified by the fact that. The federal and state. Contributions, our revenue sources. Stayed pretty much flat. Which is why it it amplifies to a cost to the the Groton taxpayer of over eight percent. So as much as it's nice to show that we're we're getting. Grants. The burden to the taxpayer. The Groton taxpayer. At the at the real estate tax level. Is higher than the four point nine percent. Four point nine eight, so. I'm all for showing. All the revenues, but it it still doesn't change the math.
Jay is, of course, absolutely correct. But it'll still give a fuller picture to our. Our community. But Jay's absolutely right.
Rita.
So I was just hoping that next week or when this. Revised budget comes to the board, that you could also list. If if we did have to make some reductions, the board. What possibly, what areas we could possibly, usually we get a list of what possibly might have to. Be reduced and you know, you sort of rate it in terms of, you know, we don't want to really reduce anything, but if we have to. Where what would be those areas?
So Rita, you took the words right out of my mouth and but can I add, can I add to your question? In the years past, we actually had the superintendent kind of gave us what a. What a reduction in her budget would look like and what she would, what we would have to lose. And I don't know, is that something that the board would like? That to have happened? Because in the years past, we've had to look at the potential of a zero. Percent increase, I don't. I did not get a sense from the town council or the R T M. That that's what they are going to require from us this year. But.
They said anything behind the scenes.
Go to a zero percent budget, like I I just think that that would also be. Probably not plausible. But I mean, so I guess my question is. Do we want her to do that? And her staff? And what what are the percentages? Am I making sense? What are the percentages that we would want? To have?
I think that's something do we, you know, does the board want to see a two percent increase or a three percent increase? What what would those different scenarios look like?
Thank you for like being much more eloquent, so.
But I think. That's what we need to get before.
Currently, we're at nearly five percent. So maybe, so maybe, so remember a three, a a two, three, four? A two percent raise, a four percent.
I mean, especially if you, if this translates to more, I was wondering, Jay, if it was a two percent increase. What does that mean for the taxpayers in Groton? Is that like five percent?
Jay.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can I can send. An email after this meeting.
How it's calculated, I just couldn't understand, you know. How that was calculated, you know. If we went up almost five percent, but yet that's eight percent to the taxpayers, that's three percent more. So I was just.
But there's one other, there's one other factor, Rita, and that is the the growth or decline of the grand list.
That's it.
And and we will be having, we will be having some more apartment complexes coming on, they will be finishing the or moving ahead on. Getting a higher valuation on the E B building, so you know, we got a number of moving parts there and I think we can counter some increase in the grand list, how much only God knows and she's not telling today.
And and I also think that that's what Council McBride was talking about in terms of the grand list, right? It was really hard to understand him, but I think that that's what he was talking about. But yeah, so that feels. So when Susan gets to it, I I've taken my notes, I'm sure everyone else has taken, you know, their their own notes. Like if it doesn't get covered, can you make sure that that goes to Susan so that we all can kind of see that as well? So that we can have an enriched conversation. I call me silly. But I would, well, you would, guys would not be the first people that would call me silly. I would actually, if we had a really good result on the thirteenth. And really talked about it and kind of came to consensus. I would love for the twenty second to actually be when we voted on the budget so that it gives the staff. A week. To do a turnaround to make sure that they got the budget to the town council. Like I I just, I'm still worried about the the two twenty seven to have the. Have the vote, but if we're not ready, we're not ready, like I I get that, but don't. I might just in case, because we have those two days, the school is off on the twentieth and the twenty first or the twentieth. I I might. Have us have a special. To vote on the budget. Meeting. That can absolutely be canceled, but we just can't add it because it would be a special, so don't don't be surprised. I mean, don't be like alarmed, like I'm not listening to people if that happens. Does that make sense?
No, what what date were you thinking about adding?
I'm I'm talking about the twenty second, which in on our list does not have it that we would be voting. It's just. It's so instead of waiting until the twenty seventh, if we're ready to vote. I think I would prefer to do it on the twenty second because it gives enough time to get it to the town. But if we're not ready, we're not ready, but I can't add a meeting within twenty four hours, so it's easier to cancel a meeting. Then we can't add a meeting, so that so that's that's what I'm just telling you.
You want another meeting after the twenty second on the schedule?
It would be like a five minute, ten minute, just to to vote on the budget. Matthew.
Is somebody, has has somebody gotten back to to Councilman McBride or will somebody get back to Councilman McBride?
We just did the minutes, it took it took quite a bit, Jones' minutes were then reviewed and we were listening to it to make sure we captured it. So we will be getting back to him.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, I I just thought I'd let you know, I probably won't be at the meeting next week, I'll be away. But I'll be here for the twenty second.
So could you please make sure that once you get the budget, if you have any questions to to send them and and also feel free to send them on to me? Because I'd be more than happy to read them in your in your behalf.
Thank you.
Jay?
The other thing I'm wondering if Ken could could gather for us is. The analysis of the insurance reserve. I know last year we decided not to touch it because we were unsure how the pandemic would affect it. However. You know, we we need to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money with regard to how much really needs to be in that reserve. And I'd be curious to know. How much of the money that's in the reserve? Is actually attributable to accounting periods that have already closed. Meaning that we are over reserving. Once we close out a year and all the claims are paid. There's really no need to continue to to maintain that level. Now, I certainly don't want to get to the point. That we got to years ago where the reserve went to zero. But if there is. An overage. You know, it really should be applied to the current year's budget. Or potentially attributed to O P E B. You know, one or the other, but I think we need to know. You know, what is really a reasonable amount? And I'm talking about the reserve over and above the corridor.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
And and Ken, you will get us the. The co pays and the insurance information for the central office also.
Yep.
So Ken and Susan and your staffs, thank you so much for being so diligent in getting and having us walk through the budget. I really appreciate that, Ken. About how hard and going to all the town meetings and facing all those questions, I really appreciate that. And also, I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I thought it was a productive meeting on Wednesday with the town council, the R T M. And I'm proud of the work that we do and I'm proud of how we represent our district, so. Thank you very much. And I will now entertain in the journey.
Thanks, Kim.
Do you want to say?
Oh, and next week on the thirteenth, Rita, you're not going to be here, but please try to come at five, we are going to have an art gallery. And as always.
A lovely snack and 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 some food.
I wish I wasn't, you know, I'm gonna try to get in for the meeting, but I don't know if I'll have internet, so. We'll see.
All right.
But thank you.
I did a back of the of the. Envelope calculation, were we to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget? I divided that by the fifty two million dollars that we'd be raising from taxpayers and it would be a one point nine percent decrease.
Well, I think it's much more complicated than that, but thank you.
Sorry.
That's right. Our motion for adjournment was seconded by Liz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstained motion has carried. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Have a great night, everybody.